Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our council work session this morning. Glad to have you invited on this wonderful foggy day. Let's start off with the adoption of the agenda. I'll need a moment to accept the workshop agenda as presented.
So move.
Thank you, Jim. Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we're going to discuss the resolution to amendment or update the City of Sky Valley financial policy. That's what we're going to be discussing today during the workshop. Jason, would you introduce the rationale for the need to look at this, the possible amendment on our financial policy and also go over the major points that will need amendment?
Matter later, Council. It won't be long. We do have one person who can depend on Zoom. The first thing is that the city does have a financial policy, which is important, and it was created in two thousand and five, so getting close to twenty years ago. And it lays out the way that we invest, we spend money, and check the balance, et cetera. And so, in fact, if you just happen to look at what everything costs now, as you may believe, it has not been updated in close to twenty years. And it kind of puts the city in a position where, for lack of a better word, we almost have to be reactive versus proactive. A case in point will be back earlier. We had four sealed bids for the vehicle for the construction of the pickleball court for road paving, the southern road and then for renovations. We did not receive any sealed bids for the construction of the pickleball court. We did not receive any sealed bids for vehicles. Twenty-five thousand on the threshold is really not enough money for most companies to worry about doing that. So if we look at this and talking with the county and what they do, and I also want to give you some real world numbers here. Right now, my authority is five thousand dollars. It's being without every other one of the councils. In two thousand and twenty-two, something that cost five thousand dollars cost around three thousand dollars in two thousand and five. If you flip that script, it's something that cost five thousand in two thousand and five, and that cost close to eight. If something's twenty-five thousand dollars, which is our threshold, to have to go into sealed bid, something twenty-five thousand dollars today is about sixteen thousand in two thousand and five. If you flip that, something that cost twenty-five thousand in two thousand and five, now it costs close to forty thousand in two thousand and twenty-two. A hundred thousand today is about sixty-five thousand in two thousand and five. Something that cost a hundred thousand in two thousand and five, now almost a hundred and fifty-two thousand. So as you can see, costs are going up. And so, what being said, most of the change, all the changes, the spending thresholds. Essentially, for example, if you go to page eight, I refer to the section three, we're asking for the ability to increase the department head's spending authority from one thousand, two thousand dollars. And then it would be my spending authority from five thousand to fifteen thousand. Another case in point would be, we've had a couple of instances where we've had to have things done very quickly. And pick the PLB repair, that was about nine thousand dollars. We had to bring it before you all were to be done. We had to replace one of the beds on one of the trucks. That was about eight thousand dollars. We had to bring that before you all, before that could be done. Those were, those needed to be done timely. And then, another caveat that we proposed would be that anything that's over fifteen thousand dollars but up to twenty-five thousand dollars, with the mayor's approval, we could spend that with funds being available, then we would report that at the next river council meeting. Anything that's twenty-five thousand or over would still require council approval as it does. However, instead of having to go and try to get sealed bids, what we do is what normally we do. We go out, try to attempt to get three qualified quotes. We're asking, and I think Council offers that here today, but we proposed going to a hundred thousand dollars for fresh open seal bid. However, if I was to speak for him, I think he, his dollar range is around seventy-five thousand. I don't want that out. So those are the main points that we're asking for consideration. And one of the reasons it's kind of drowning is, as you know, there's a lot of, we've built a lot of infrastructure improvements as of late. We got several quotes from Caldwell Construction who have done some of our work for us. We've also presented a proposal with the county where they're going out trying to get a group purchase for road, we would be included. But of the five or six roads that we've already got quotes from Caldwell, every one of those quotes is over twenty-five thousand dollars with the exception of one that's less than seventy-five thousand. So with that being said, as we have several roads that need to be resurfaced, that we would immediately identify. If they're under that seventy-five thousand dollar threshold, we would attempt to get three quotes from qualified paving companies. We wouldn't have to go through the process of having to get still advertised in the paper, getting, incurring those expenses with the tower. So that is the reason for this. It's just trying to bring this up to to the twenty-first, to twenty, to twenty-two dollars. And again, to give us the ability to be a little more proactive with expenses versus being reactive. So that's why I'm proceeding. And I'll be glad to answer your questions. But that's essentially the bulk of the, of the, of the question here.
Would you go over it one more time? So department heads would have the authority from one thousand to thirty thousand.
I'd sell out. Their management authority would go from five thousand to fifteen thousand. Up to anything fifteen thousand and one dollars up to twenty-five thousand dollars with the mayor's and that has, it needs to be a qualifying expense. There needs to be money there. Obviously, we do budget for contingencies. But if something comes up that we need to address very quickly up to twenty-five thousand dollars, with the mayor's approval, we would go ahead and get it done. We would report that at the next council meeting. Anything twenty-five thousand or over, you would still require council approval. It's just we would not have to go through the sealed bid process. We would increase that threshold. You know, a hundred thousand dollars or down at like around seventy-five thousand, whatever is the development level of the council.
Jason, typically, on the capital side of it, and I guess it would be applied to the paving. Typically, what does a paving, we're talking about patching, what is that cost?
Well, given the example, we, Squaw Valley, because it is a dead end road, it's probably about a half a mile. To redo that road is about forty thousand dollars. To actually pave a road, it's about around about two hundred feet to two hundred and seventy-five thousand a mile. But you have to break that down per foot, but it's probably, I'd have to do the math off the top of my head. But a lot of these roads that we have immediate needs, Squaw Valley, section Evergreen, where the new pavement ends to the existing pavement that passed rescue back up to La Balle. I think that was around seventy thousand dollars. That's about three quarters of a mile. And that's repaved and not doing it front paid. It's milling, but it varies, but as you can tell, it's, it's so quarter of a mile would be, you might as well say about fifty thousand per quarter mile to seventy-five thousand, depending on what traffic down. Again, a lot of this, a lot of these immediate needs that we need to do are under that seventy-five thousand dollar threshold. A lot of things that we're looking at, in fact, Jared and myself, we're revisiting our priority list. We've identified about two hundred courts in the city and probably thirty miles of road that need to be repaired. We just replied, we just did the two on Ridge Pole. That was around twenty-three thousand dollars. Some of those may be less, some of those may be more. Some we can do in-house, some we need to contract. We're anticipating a lot, a large bulk of that work being from that twenty-five thousand and seventy-five thousand dollar threshold. So that being said, it would still, you'd have the checks and balances, and it still have to come before you all for approval. It's just we would not have to go through the the process of a sealed bid, hoping to get quotes, may not get quotes, et cetera. I know I've talked with some companies. I know going back to the pickleball court, we got some quotes. I talked to two or three of those vendors. They would give me verbal quotes or email written quotes. But they really were not interested in doing a sealed bid. It just, it just wasn't worth their time.
No incentive. The incentive is, you know, raise that threshold.
Yeah, and as I said, we put out, we put out a sealed bid proposal early in the year to buy a vehicle for a corner park. But we were anticipating about fifty thousand dollars for that vehicle. We didn't, we didn't get any, we didn't get any proposal. When I called a couple of dealerships, they were like, well, we just don't have time. We, we, we don't have time for that. If you want, you want to buy a vehicle, I'll give you a price. But if you want me to do some kind of official proposal without an out, yeah, we just, yeah. So anyway, there's, again, the attempt is to be proactive versus reactive. So lack of that word.
Oh, I got another question. I heard this for this workshop or later in between. I've had discussions on the ridge pole. What is the next step on that?
About Culver?
Yeah, the Culver.
Well, I was going to talk about that in my management call today, but they're actually supposed, I thought I'll call up a structure. They are supposed to be up here today. Paving that, that area very recur. We have, I thought, would Caldwell, I'm going to tell you, we've got about a plane coming tomorrow. It's had time to stabilize. He has told me that they're going to be here today. It's, once this fog burns off, it should be a clear day for them to do that. And then the guys are actually going to be repaving there around one sixty where the Reverend Kahoulish lives at in the corner. We had a tree growing in water on there. They had to cut that tree down back. Anyway, the guys are going to be doing that. They're going to be doing some work with Grand Drive, Reno Circle today with the roller paving that y'all bought a few months ago. So both of those will be, the Caldwell's going to be doing one, we're going to be doing the other.
Same.
I noticed there's Kahoulish's forning.
Yeah.
Yeah. Got a roller out.
It's just, we, it's been a long time to do this, and I'm going, Jerry's got me a handful of things to talk about in my report. Leave backing, but it just had such rain, you just can't get through it. But that should be, that will be taken care of today. That's the plan. So.
Yeah, I just understand you to say that the, the problem at the Kahoulish House, from where it's right in the house, was caused by a tree growing into a water.
All the water, it was all, you know.
And so the water was coming out of the pipe underground.
Well, it, it, we, there, there was a leak. It was already, and when we got, we started digging, that, that tree that was right there, the roots were growing in and
Is a tree across the road?
No, it was on, it was on his side. We actually had, we got, the tree was actually in the driveway. We had to cut the tree down. But, but that's been repaired. We had to cut probably about from here to the door, a swath of road perpendicular with the road about this wide. But, but you know, you tell me when you do that, you need time for the dirt to stabilize. It's been time. So yeah, that'll be, we will, we will repay that today. And then Caldwell should be up here repaving around seven forty, they're pulling curve. So those two things should be done today. Once the, once the fog burns off in the morning.
What time is that going to be? And how long is that going to take?
Well, uh.
I mean, I can hit out of town. I'm just in case somebody.
I don't know what time. I mean, they probably we need a little bit, it needs to be a little bit warmer. It should warm up today. It's supposed to get sunny this afternoon. I'm thinking probably late morning or the afternoon, but they wrote, we did put out a notice. I was a mail champ. It's on the website. It's on the Twitter feed and the Facebook page. But to answer your question, there may be a little bit of disruption when they do that, but it won't be long. It will probably take them about thirty minutes to repave that section, not to come in and and, and once they put, but once they lay the asphalt out and they form it and get a good base, they'll take their roller and take two or three passes. But once, once they, once they roll it, you can pretty much grab all these payments. So.
You leave and turn again?
So no, just hope to take the back road.
You don't shoot it.
And you are going all the time.
If anybody needs, if somebody needs to fill Alpine, they can put Alpine if they need to go towards in the Ridge Pole. Or of course, they can, people can take Alex Mountain, come back to now. Or you can take the southern road, Evergreen is open now. And I tell you that, that road is tremendous amount of use. I was down there the other day and I think there were about five cars that I, that I passed.
A little bit of toll on that road.
I know, I know, my boy, he got to gave us about a hundred and fifty thousand of that. They told us we couldn't get it, but we're very blessed to have that road there.
I noticed that the model constructor picked up the, the last of the
Culvers.
Culver pipes that had been sitting there. So are we going to strike?
We are, we are. I think the guy's name is, Jerry's supposed to place a call with, his first name is Daniel, but he, they have a striking case. Yeah, we should be getting that strike. And we tried to get the shoulders stabilized. We had some pads and some grassy plant. You probably saw some of the hay along the showers.
So the grass, the, the grass seeds actually.
So, yeah. It is, it is still a work in progress, but it will be striped. It's just a matter of getting over this, getting over to deal with this, to get it done. So.
Yeah. On the one hand, it goes into county roads that are not striking.
Yeah. So yeah, that is the plan. It will be striped and we've, if you've been out there, we've got a stop sign up. We've got a city limit sign. We've got a speed limit sign up. So.
Got an Evergreen sign.
Yeah, it's, it's all nice and official and
Okay, let's get, let's get to that. This approval, possible approval. What are your thoughts, Council, on Bill's recommendation that we consider under purchasing of goods and services to change it from a hundred thousand to, to a cap of seventy-five thousand before we have to be sealed bids?
I the only thing I can think of, it was over seventy-five thousand and under a hundred would have been the eighty thousand for the city hall renovation. And I wouldn't feel bad about going on record publicly in a vote or something of that significance.
So your thing would be for the city?
Yes, but it's, it's, it's not a strong way. It's, you know, a hundred thousand. We're, I think we're getting, we're not just making up for pretty prior inflation. We're getting a little bit out ahead of it too. So that's fine. Yeah, that's fine. And we've got, we've got a city manager that is able to get things done and the more he can do without our involvement.
Without making it more difficult to get his job though.
Yeah.
Right. Agreed with you, Jim. So either way, it's okay to use what you're saying.
Yeah, but I, I don't, I don't get seventy-five for some reason.
I think it's pretty.
I'm listening and learn.
You're listening and learn.
You know, I, I think the purpose, the purpose for, 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 as you said, is to, oh, one, give the city the flexibility to operate it timely and efficient manner without creating so many restrictions. It, it, you know, takes so long to do so. But the other thing is, you don't, you don't, you don't want to put us in a position where where all the responsibility comes to one person. So you want to spread that at some point. And the difference between seventy-five and a hundred to me is, I don't think it's significant. If, if it's a hundred, that's, I'm, I'm good with that. I'm following that. I think that's a good number. But you know, the, the lower you make it, the more, the more bureaucracy you get to have to the process.
Yeah.
I, I do know that the kind of going to a hundred and fifty thousand.
Well, either whether you, whether the council knows a seventy-five or a hundred, it still hasn't come before you all for approval. So. Share that.
Yeah. Well, do we have any, any other comments about this? Before anybody who is a participant in, meeting participant, need to say anything about.
We had no person on the meeting, but they brought off.
Okay. Well, Neil has come back. He ran away, but he came back. Did you need to say anything?
No, I was sorry to disturb you. Well, my dentist called me. And it's very important to spin me off, sorry.
Any other conception of possible change to the high management?
I just want to know, this, when this was adopted in the five, by a resolution, this would be rather by a resolution. So it would only require one, one reading. So.
Yeah.
And the city attorney didn't look yet. He can't be here today. But Doug sent me an email. He did look through it and he thought it was literally sound. So I do want to have that.
I think it's pretty myself, inefficient. Any other discussion?
I didn't understand what you just said.
I said, I think it's proven that we go ahead and do this.
Do the seventy-five?
Oh, I didn't think of that. I want to make it as efficient as possible. I, I don't get to vote, so you all have to vote.
Well. I, I would swing either way. I would, my initial reaction was the hundred was the right number because it's like Tony says, it involves less bureaucracy and we're blessed to have somebody of Jason's ability and we trust him and we still have a hand in it.
I mean, we still have to prove it. We just don't have to get sealed bids. So that's the whole difference. Correct?
Well, and either way, just for the sake of discussion, being that it's resolution, if we find that it's becoming cumbersome with seventy-five being the cap, we can always, it can always be brought back and adjusted, but just want to share that as well. So for whatever the council comfortable with, we'll, we'll, we will work with it for them.
I just don't see the benefit of reducing it. I'm talking about, I mean, what, what, what does it benefit us to do that? I will do that.
Any other discussion on any of the other changes that you mentioned?
I've got a few.
Okay.
On, on page one, the second, whereas I think this, I, I think the second word is costs. Okay. So and I wouldn't, I wouldn't bother with these things, but this is the kind of thing that, oh, yeah, it's going to, it's going to be reserved forever.
I think the gasoline's probably one. We can certainly adjust that. Just a couple of little changes for, 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 for on page two, under city planning, it says all funding requests must be submitted to the city management no later than June fifth of each calendar year. That had to do with, with for the apartment heads with the budget request. We, I think they should probably say shoot it. I mean, you know, you know, putting that hard deadline things with the way things are, June fifteenth, you're, that's middle of the year. You're only halfway into the year. There's still a lot of unknown. I mean, we, we actually had the budget approved earlier, one month earlier this year than we did last year. And I was real getting these numbers from, from the chief and Jerry. I would say probably as late as July, late mid-July. So I think it should, I know that's, and then and then there's some there's just a place that says, should, shall, I mean, shall, will, that we just put should. I just think you just said, oh, it doesn't really affect the spending, but it just kind of, again, the intent is to be proactive versus reactive. There's really no, I don't really see the reason why it must begin by doing the thing. But stuff like that. And then thankfully, the only other thing that really important is that I think under Katie's bag, and I actually carried this out in the day. I think at the three hundred, I had proposed to take it to the five hundred. Even if it went to five hundred, we can keep the three hundred, but that's just a point of, a point of notice.
That's a catch in the
Like, we'll keep the city hall, I think, I think. You might as well have three hundred. I don't know, but I had to vote five hundred, but if we keep it three hundred.
Sounds a little rational because we're going to have a business.
We have, we have a site with slag and we got to sell it. So we have a vault. We have a site. That is the only other thing that.
Go for it.
With page three, the section of the budget transfer. There's a, there's a word inserted in the first line in rail funds. And I'm not sure we really need that in there. I think it makes perfect sense without the word unless you're trying to say that, because you get to the end of the year and there's funds remaining in the budget then. But I'm thinking we want to be able to do that at any.
Paying out the word farming?
Yeah.
And well, as, as, now, I have the ability to do what's called intra-fund moving.
In what?
Intra-fund.
Intra-fund.
Meaning that if which is not uncommon this late in the year, we have certain lineups, we have a penny over, we have some that are under. I can do, I can move those funds around. However, it does not change the total budget.
Right.
An inter-fund, which moves money from one fund to another, that requires council approval. So it's, it's really better than finding that. But you know, I've actually had to do, I've actually had to do a couple of intra-fund moves back last month. It's, it's not uncommon late in the year. We've had some overages and some things, but again, as long as we're not over as a total, we're fine. So.
Yeah, I think we want that flexibility. Okay, going over to page eight, for the bulk of the changes were under section three of purchasing goods. And I don't know if that's really section three or that is from section two.
Well, it's, yeah, it's been fixed on the final version. So that is really two. It should be one to, or is it back to these three, three, three things?
But the, the, the comment of substance was that under the new section two, the department should make every effort to solicit three bids. Instead of every effort, which implies, you know, going to extreme measures, I would say every reasonable effort. I think that would make it more user friendly. And going on to page nine, paragraph number eight, a responsive bid is one that conforms in all material respects to the needs of the city. Then we say responsible means, and I would think we would say responsive, to make sure that we're using the terminology. I think to get, that's the intent, is to clarify the previous sentence. So additional. So responsive also means the bidder. So responsive also.
We can certainly, correct, the final one version.
Okay, and on page third, page twelve, authorized investments. And I may be criticizing the state of Georgia law. And, and I may be criticizing the state of Georgia law about what we're. What we're allowed to invest in, but. Uh, I think that this is incredibly restrictive in this day and age, uh, given the, given today's financial instruments. You know, ju- just simple mutual funds or exchange traded funds or bonds that, uh. Can be traded, you know, by filling out an online form, by making a phone call or an email. I mean, compare that to buying revenue bonds from Dog Pass, Georgia, that there hasn't been a transaction that knows in the last six months. So, I, I'm not sure there's anything we can do about that, and I'm not sure that's, that these are the, these are the things mandated by Georgia law or not. I find them very dated, but, uh, it, it looks like we're not at all interested in. Putting any interest on it, or more interested in, in what we cannot use. Okay, we really don't have much more than that, so, okay, well, in that case. Don't worry about it, and I don't need to defend that maturity as I have certain. But, you know. Yeah, a lot, I would, I could, I could completely eliminate. And, uh, I think my last comment is on page fifteen, under. Fixed assets, we're defining fixed assets, and. It has to meet all the following criteria, the last criteria is that. The threshold is, is, is two thousand dollar, and if we haven't changed that, I would think that because of inflation. We'd wanna move that to five thousand dollar, but no reason to, just, you know, every.
Is that mandated to the chart of accounts of the state, or do we know?
Uh, to.
Yeah, I don't know if it's mandated or not, or if we have that option, will we be checking through it?
That, it just seems to be in, in the spirit of the rest of the changes we're making. And, uh. Last comment, honest. Page eighteen, under, under casualty loss, uh, first paragraph. Uh, only when the asset is no longer in possession of the department due to one of the six reasons listed above. Is disposal action appropriate, well, I don't know what a disposal action is, I think it means we're gonna sell something. We've already, we've already said above that, you know, we, the first thing we say is we've already sold it or traded it in, so we don't possess it. So I would go down to the second to the last paragraph that starts all assets. And the last clause in that is that. Assets no longer in possession will be removed from the master departmental asset file, we're gonna take that, that wording. Uh, removed from the master department asset file, and you substituting that for. Is disposal action up in the top paragraph. In other words, the first paragraph would read, only when the asset is no longer in possession of the department. Due to under six reasons above, could it be removed from the master departmental asset file? So, so we don't have to figure out what a disposal action is, because it's contradictory to what we just said on the previous page.
Get rid of that page.
Any comments from the participants?
We don't have, well, I don't, we don't, well, I'm doing my, I'm just trying to. Oh, just, just, just one, one call, I mean, when Jason was talking about the wording between shall and should. You know, if, if, if you have, if you have the word shall in there, if any, it's required, and, and, and then without a penalty for not. Doing that, I mean, what, what happens if you don't get it in, is there, is there, so, since there's nothing there, it sort of means. So, so should make sense in that situation, maybe.
About last seventy years, eight years, I don't think we've, we've complied with most of those shouts.
Yeah.
You might admit it, would that make it more?
Yeah.
Want to say you, Jason?
I like the should.
Well, uh, I know this. Same time, I know, a lot of my. My school visits and friend lives again, it's been on the way. As, as, you know, it's the child of management, which is more than five, it's, it is one of the years, so it, uh. The child have a painting, poor, and where should be more festival is.
Okay, any, anything else, gentlemen? All right, with that, I'm gonna have to ask for a motion for adjournment.
So.
Thank you, Tony, second. Thank you, Tim, all of that.
I.
Right, well, we will start the.